All right, I will call to order the meeting of the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission for Wednesday, April 6 at 1:30. Jen, can I have a roll call, please? Oh, here comes Commissioner Flansburgh.
Thank you.
Did you like it?
What's that?
How about you give me another chair?
Oh, okay.
Justice.
Ah, fiscal chairs.
Can we have a roll call, please, Jen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Daniel Henderson.
Here.
Michael Widmer.
President.
Bill Hauck.
Here.
Michael Drinkwater.
Here.
John Enlow.
Here.
John Flansburgh.
Here.
Mickey Hazelwood.
Here.
John Martini.
Here.
Chris Melton.
Here.
Dave Solero.
Here.
Mervyn Wright.
John Zimmerman.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Jen. That'll bring us to item number two, public comments. Jen, do we have any cards or?
I have none.
I'm not seeing a robust public attendance today, so with that, we'll move on to item number three, approval of the agenda.
Move to approve as presented in the second.
I got a motion from Commissioner Drinkwater, second by the other Commissioner, John. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Move on to item number four, approval of the minutes of the March 22 meeting.
I would move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Flansburgh.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hauck. Any comments or edits or changes to the minutes?
I was abstaining from voting because I wasn't here for that meeting.
Thank you, Mickey.
This wasn't I, so also.
All right. Hearing no further comment, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? And I think we've got a couple of abstentions today. All those abstaining? Mickey and Mike.
And I will as well.
And Chris. Okay, thank you, Chris. Jen, does that carry?
Yeah, Lucas.
Yeah, I was gonna say, do we need a roll call vote on that one?
It does.
We shared with three of them. Okay, thank you. All right, my favorite agenda item today. Item number five, nomination and election of a chair and a vice chair of the commission for the term of April 2022 to April of 2023, and possible direction to staff. Kim.
Thank you, Chairman Martini. Kim Rigdon, Water Resources Program Manager, for the record. So every April, a new chair and vice chair are nominated and elected by the commission to serve for a one-year term. The WRWC Act states that the positions must be rotated annually, and two members have served twice, representing Washoe County Water Conservation District and the City of Sparks. So you two are not on the roll call for nomination. So with that, I'll turn that back over to you, Chairman, to initiate the nominations and elections.
Thank you, Kim. All right, I'll take nominations for the chair first, please. Mr. Drinkwater.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Mr. Widmer to serve as our chair for the upcoming year. Commissioner Widmer, sorry.
Thank you, Commissioner Drinkwater. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Zimmerman. Any comments?
Well, Commissioner Widmer does.
Mike?
Not sure I'm prepared to take over the chair today, but I would be more unhappy to serve as vice chairman.
Thank you, Mike. All right, we have a motion and a second on the table. Any further discussion?
Well, in light of Mr. Widmer's comments, I think that's something we should consider.
All right, so the maker of the motion was Commissioner Drinkwater. Mike, would you like to reconsider your motion based on the comments made by Commissioner Widmer?
I guess I certainly. I would prefer that we just vote no and kill it and let somebody else make a nomination.
We can certainly do that.
That would be my preference.
Based on the comments from the maker of the motion, I will call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Hearing none? All those opposed? Nay?
Nay.
Motion?
Thank you.
Absolutely, Mike. All right, let's try this again for a chair. I will entertain a motion.
Who has it been for the longest? I mean, I've looked at this, it almost looks like, sorry, Dave.
Looks like Darren Price is here.
One of the others have served in this position prior to you.
I'll make a motion. I move that we elect Dave Solero as chairman for the next term.
All right, we've got a motion from Commissioner Flansburgh. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Enlow. Commissioner Solero, do you have any comments?
You're all killing me.
It pays to be president.
All right, hearing no further comment, any comments from Commissioner President? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Chairman Solero.
Hey, I appreciate that.
At this point, I think you are up on the agenda for election of a vice chair.
All right, taking over for past chair Martini, I would take nominations for vice chair.
Oh, well, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I would like to nominate Mr. Widmer, Commissioner Widmer for vice chair.
I'll second that.
All right, I've got a nomination and a second. And based on the prior comments, I don't think there's any conversation there, so go ahead and take a vote on this. All those in favor, say goodbye by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, passed unanimously. Well, David, I'll help you out. All right, thank you a lot. All right, so that'll take us on to item number six, is report and discussion on the draft update, Chapter 4, wastewater and effluent management for the 2021 through 2040 Conference of Regional Water Management Plan. So, Mr. Smitherman, if you're in the room, you're up.
I don't see a mic over here, I'm gonna go down and put it.
Great, Jim, thanks.
More official that here anyway. Is the mic on to hear? Okay, all right, good. Okay, so Chapter 4, wastewater and effluent management planning, has been, we've been working on it for a while, and I've kind of requested time because of the work that we're doing on the effluent management plan, guidance document. And so we've got a draft chapter almost ready to go. If you looked at the version in your packet, you can see that there are a couple of under development sections. Some of those have come in, I'm still waiting on one. But anyway, just for a brief overview, the chapter covers wastewater service providers, water reclamation facilities, environmental control and pretreatment programs as applicable, effluent management practices that are happening now, some regional effluent management efforts, and then studies and programs to address certain areas served by septic systems in the county. So Section 4.1, wastewater service providers, largely unchanged from the 2016 version, there have been just a couple of updates, but it covers pretty much Reno Sparks, Washoe County, Sun Valley GID as providers of wastewater services. There was a recommendation for a map that I think there's a map in Chapter 9 in the Finance and Costs section that breaks down the service areas by the jurisdictions served within the service areas. So, City of Reno residents or connections being soured to STUMWORF and those sorts of things. So it's an informative map, so I think I'm gonna take that map and maybe look at what's on the current map, locations of the wastewater facilities, that sort of thing, and then maybe make a new map rather than just adding one. So a new hybrid map, I think, will be in the version when you see it next. Let's see, Water Reclamation Facility section has essentially been rewritten to bring things up to current status, so incorporating all of the current information from facility plans, expansions, and upgrades and that sort of thing. And also, there are descriptions of current practices for effluent management. Section 4.3 is being rewritten almost exclusively or entirely, descriptions of the proposed Palomino Farm Sustainable Water Resources feasibility study and an alternative being evaluated or studied for discharge to Long Valley Creek. Both appear now as subsections in that section of the chapter. Also, descriptions of One Water Nevada's Advanced Purified Water Program at American Flat and the pipeline project to supply TUMWORF reclaimed water to the Tahoe Reno Industrial GID have been received, but I didn't get them in time to put them in the packet. So those are incorporated into the draft chapter, you'll see them next. So now what I need is a section describing the Regional Effluent Management Plan and Guidance Document. That will go in as soon as it's written. And then the final section, 4.4, is on septic systems. That's pretty much unchanged from the 2016 Regional Water Management Plan. There hasn't been a whole lot of work done on that subject in the last five years, at least from the regional water planning perspective. It focuses on areas having high densities of septic systems and then includes some studies from five to 10 years ago to understand the effects to water quality and some water quality mitigation measures. So, in conclusion, a new map based on TMRPA's map that I described earlier is gonna be in the new version of the chapter as well as a section on the Effluent Management Plan and Guidance Document. I expect to present that to you in May, so in one month's time, and not really asking for any action from you today, so I think this is a non-action item. But what I would ask you to do is have a look at the version that's in your packet. I will email you an editable version of what I have so far, so that'll just be lacking the one section. And if you want to provide me comments, have your staff provide me comments, just email them back to the email address that it comes from. And that would be adequate for me to incorporate those comments back into the version that you'll see in May. And then hopefully by May, you will have what will be the final draft version to go in, compiled into the updated plan. That's all I have.
All right, Mr. Smitherman, thank you very much. What's the date you would like to have those comments back by?
I think anytime, how about Tax Day?
Perfect.
Or maybe if that's in the middle of the week, the Friday following April 15th, that would be.
It's a Friday.
Plenty of time. That's a Friday?
It's a Friday.
This year, Tax Day would be Monday, 18th.
Okay, Monday, the 18th works for me, then.
All right, sounds good. Are there any other comments, questions for Mr. Smitherman?
No, appreciate the report.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to item number seven, report and discussion on the draft update for Chapter 10. Ms. Rigdon.
Thank you, Chairman Solero. Kim Rigdon, Water Resources Program Manager, for the record. Record. So today, you should have received, when you sat down, the Chapter 10 draft that I've recently been able to put together, and I also had Jen email it to the commissioners that are on Zoom today, so hopefully you were able to get the link to that or that email. So I'd stated in the staff report that I would provide two copies, one with track changes and one a readable copy. I'm abstaining from providing the track changes because it's unreadable, and this entire chapter has been overhauled, so I felt like we could save paper and time and just bring you the chapter that's clean and readable. So also, in writing the staff report, I've made some significant edits to the format of the chapters. So the sections that you see in the staff report no longer match with the sections are in the actual part, so you won't be able to refer back from the staff report to the actual draft document. And the reason I decided to do some significant formatting on that was, we have planning areas such as the South Trekkie Meadows, Lemon Valley, Central Trekkie Meadows, and we had two different sections for municipal water resources and then one for wastewater and effluent management. And a significant amount of the conversation is now overlapping with the reclaimed water reuse projects and effluent reuse, and so I felt like it would be more readable to outline for the specific planning areas, the relevant municipal and wastewater, municipal water and wastewater sections, and it reads easier. And then when I do receive the last of the wastewater management and effluent information, I'll go ahead and incorporate that in, so you'll see in some of the sections that that information is still developing. So I'll just quickly go through this section. So Section 10.1 is, it reflects the 2040, or 2020, 2040 Water Resources Plan Updates from TUMWORF, which address the future water demands, conjunctive use of water resources, source water protection, aquifer storage and recovery. I don't know why I can't talk today. And One Water Nevada efforts. And Section 10.2 for Central Trekkie Meadows is essentially the TUMWORF facility updates. They had a 2020 facility plan update, and it outlines much of their recycled water goals. Section 10.3 for South Trekkie Meadows outlines the, this section has a significant overhaul, and it reflects both municipal and wastewater and effluent management alternatives. It speaks to the Mount Rose Treatment Plan completion, aquifer storage and recovery facilities that were constructed, recent pump station and pipeline improvements in the Huffaker Reservoir Lining. It also includes information from the 2020 Water Reclamation Facility Plan and effluent management options are identified in that, so that one should be pretty complete. The South, I'm sorry, the Stead Lemon Valley section is Section 10.4, and that one is essentially the RISWORF expansion to 4 MGD. It speaks to the Swan Lake Flood Mitigation Strategies, American Flat, Advanced Purified Water Project, and the future, near-future decommissioning of the Lemon Valley Water Reclamation Facility. 10.5 is Cold Springs, and that primarily outlines the need for the water balance modeling in that closed hydrographic basin, the rapid infiltration basin capacity analysis for the Cold Springs Water Reclamation Facility. Wastewater and effluent management sections are developing for that section currently, so those will be forthcoming. For Spanish Springs, Section 10.6, this section is primarily focused on TUMWORF's completion of the Pilot Water Treatment Study for Nitrate and Arsenic Removal and the Palomino Valley Effluent Reuse and Aquifer Storage and Recovery project, potential project, and some of the septic density challenges that they're facing. 10.7, the Tracy Segment, Lower Trekkie River, this one is focused on Tri-Center and coordination with the Tri, General Improvement District, I want to say Tri-Center, Tri-Gid, and coordination with TUMWORF for the non-podable water demands and with respect to return flow and TUMWORF's near-term effluent management strategies. Section 10.8 is the Trekkie Canyon Verde area, and this one does just focus on TUMWORF's purchase of the West Reno Water Company and their development of the long-range facility plan that they have in place. Section 10.9 is an older section, creation of new water systems that has minor modifications that essentially clarify the conformance with regional water planning and master plans and TUMWORF's role to assess benefits and financial impacts. Section 10.10, the groundwater resource development and impact to domestic wells, has really minor edits. That one hasn't really changed, so that one will look really familiar. Section 10.1 is our water conservation section, and I did some significant paring down of this section to reference just current and proposed activities under the TUMWORF's Water Conservation Plan, which is outlined significantly in Chapter 8 and has a table and a list of all the conservation measures, short-term and long-term measures that they are addressing for water conservation. And so I just pared that down and proposed that we continue support of those strategies. I am working with TUMWORF staff to see if there's any more developing proposed action items for that section. Section 10.12, Integrated Use of Water Rights, and I promise we're getting there. This one is TUMWORF's section, and it essentially addresses, I lost my place, sorry, all the integrated use of water rights in the area from a perspective of cooperative water management rather than water quantity issues. And so there is some changes there to look at how the region is gonna manage those water resources from that cooperative management approach. Section 10.13, Septic Systems and Water Quality, there's not a lot of changes in here. I did send this over for feedback from a couple of the staffers at TUMWORF that used to work in Washoe County Division of Water Resources and has done some extensive studies, and he's looking at updating, helping me to update where necessary, but it looks like this will have some minor edits moving forward. And the Trekkie Meadows NPDES Stormwater Discharge Permit, there are very minor edits to that that continue to support the implementation of their swamp program and activities. I did include some support for any 319 applications that they might be putting forward for watershed projects that are complementary to meeting their permit requirements. On 10.15, Water Resources and Land Use Planning, there were some significant updates to this. I worked with Jeremy Smith, the Director of the Trekkie Meadows Regional Planning Agency, to continue to figure out how to collaborate more on regional water planning with the regional management plan. So we'll be continuing to work towards that and see where we can assist with incorporating water management planning into their natural resources plan and sharing data and information. The Local Government Drainage Programs, 10.16, that's still under development. I received this morning some information from a couple of the different agencies that are gonna help me work through where they're at with their goals. I think some of the budgets and capital improvement plans needed to be complete before they would have that information for me, so now that they've completed that process, we'll include that into this section. For the Regional Flood Plane Management and Flood Control Section, 10.17, there's minimal changes there. I'll be working with that group to see if they have any proposed action items that they'd like to be included in the plan for support from the regional commission. 10.18 is the Water Quality Protection and Remediation Section. I contacted the Nevada Division of Environmental Protection because, you know, these projects are really in their, they implement these programs for the Spark Solvent Fuel Site and the PCE Contamination Plume in Lemon Valley, and I talked to Jeff Collins over there, the Bureau Chief of the Corrective Actions Section, and he's getting me some information on that. He said there has been some updates, and so I want to make sure I reflect their current status of what they're working on in those areas for that section. And then finally, 10.19 is the Source Water and Watershed Protection. Of course, this hits close to home for me. This is a new section to reflect the 2020 Integrated Source Water and Watershed Protection Plan that was approved by this board in the WRWC, and we'd like to continue those efforts in implementing that plan, so there's some goals in there for us to do that. So that is the overview of the chapter. I know that's a lot, it's the summary of all the chapters, so I feel like I get to give you an overview of the entire plan. So with that, as with Chapter 4, we'll be looking to have you review the draft and provide comments to us by mid-April or provide staff comments by mid-April, and we'll bring that final draft update to you in the May meeting. So with that, Chairman Solero, back to you.
All right, are there any questions for Ms. Rigdon?
Not seeing any on my incredibly small screen here. I'll go ahead and move on to item number eight, then, report and discussion regarding chapters and schedule related to the drafting and presentation of the 2021-2040 Regional Water Management Plan. Ms. Rigdon.
Thank you, Chairman Solero. Kim Rigdon, Water Resources Program Manager, for the record. So today, you should have received, when you sat down, the Chapter 10 draft that I've recently been able to put together, and I also had Jen email it to the commissioners that are on Zoom today, so hopefully you were able to get the link to that or that email. So I'd stated in the staff report that I would provide two copies, one with track changes and one a readable copy. I'm abstaining from providing the track changes because it's unreadable, and this entire chapter has been overhauled, so I felt like we could save paper and time and just bring you the chapter that's clean and readable. So also, in writing the staff report, I've made some significant edits to the format of the chapters, so the sections that you see in the staff report no longer match with the sections are in the actual part, so you won't be able to refer back from the staff report to the actual draft document. And the reason I decided to do some significant formatting on that was, we have planning areas such as the South Trekkie Meadows, Lemon Valley, Central Trekkie Meadows, and we had two different sections for municipal water resources and then one for wastewater and effluent management, and a significant amount of the conversation is now overlapping with the reclaimed water reuse projects and effluent reuse, and so I felt like it would be more readable to outline for the specific planning areas, the relevant municipal and wastewater, municipal water and wastewater sections, and it reads easier. And then when I do receive the last of the wastewater management and effluent information, I'll go ahead and incorporate that in, so you'll see in some of the sections that that information is still developing. So I'll just quickly go through this section. So Section 10.1 is, it reflects the 2040, or 2020, 2040 Water Resources Plan Updates from TUMWORF, which address the future water demands, conjunctive use of water resources, source water protection, aquifer storage and recovery. I don't know why I can't talk today. And One Water Nevada efforts. And Section 10.2 for Central Trekkie Meadows is essentially the TUMWORF facility updates. They had a 2020 facility plan update, and it outlines much of their recycled water goals. Section 10.3 for South Trekkie Meadows outlines the, this section has a significant overhaul, and it reflects both municipal and wastewater and effluent management alternatives. It speaks to the Mount Rose Treatment Plan completion, aquifer storage and recovery facilities that were constructed, recent pump station and pipeline improvements in the Huffaker Reservoir Lining. It also includes information from the 2020 Water Reclamation Facility Plan and effluent management options are identified in that, so that one should be pretty complete. The South, I'm sorry, the Stead Lemon Valley section is Section 10.4, and that one is essentially the RISWORF expansion to 4 MGD. It speaks to the Swan Lake Flood Mitigation Strategies, American Flat, Advanced Purified Water Project, and the future, near-future decommissioning of the Lemon Valley Water Reclamation Facility. 10.5 is Cold Springs, and that primarily outlines the need for the water balance modeling in that closed hydrographic basin, the rapid infiltration basin capacity analysis for the Cold Springs Water Reclamation Facility. Wastewater and effluent management sections are developing for that section currently, so those will be forthcoming. For Spanish Springs, Section 10.6, this section is primarily focused on TUMWORF's completion of the Pilot Water Treatment Study for Nitrate and Arsenic Removal and the Palomino Valley Effluent Reuse and Aquifer Storage and Recovery project, potential project, and some of the septic density challenges that they're facing. 10.7, the Tracy Segment, Lower Trekkie River, this one is focused on Tri-Center and coordination with the Tri, General Improvement District, I want to say Tri-Center, Tri-Gid, and coordination with TUMWORF for the non-podable water demands and with respect to return flow and TUMWORF's near-term effluent management strategies. Section 10.8 is the Trekkie Canyon Verde area, and this one does just focus on TUMWORF's purchase of the West Reno Water Company and their development of the long-range facility plan that they have in place. Section 10.9 is an older section, creation of new water systems that has minor modifications that essentially clarify the conformance with regional water planning and master plans and TUMWORF's role to assess benefits and financial impacts. Section 10.10, the Groundwater Resource Development and Impact to Domestic Wells, has really minor edits. That one hasn't really changed, so that one will look really familiar. Section 10.1 is our Water Conservation Section, and I did some significant paring down of this section to reference just current and proposed activities under the TUMWORF's Water Conservation Plan, which is outlined significantly in Chapter 8 and has a table and a list of all the conservation measures, short-term and long-term measures that they are addressing for water conservation. And so I just pared that down and proposed that we continue support of those strategies. I am working with TUMWORF staff to see if there's any more developing proposed action items for that section. Section 10.12, Integrated Use of Water Rights, and I promise we're getting there. This one is TUMWORF's section, and it essentially addresses, I lost my place, sorry, all the integrated use of water rights in the area from a perspective of cooperative water management rather than water quantity issues, and so there is some changes there to look at how the region is gonna manage those water resources from that cooperative management approach. Section 10.13, Septic Systems and Water Quality, there's not a lot of changes in here. I did send this over for feedback from a couple of the staffers at TUMWORF that used to work in Washoe County Division of Water Resources and has done some extensive studies, and he's looking at updating, helping me to update where necessary, but it looks like this will have some minor edits moving forward. And the Trekkie Meadows NPDES Stormwater Discharge Permit, there are very minor edits to that that continue to support the implementation of their swamp program and activities. I did include some support for any 319 applications that they might be putting forward for watershed projects that are complimentary to meeting their permit requirements. On 10.15, Water Resources and Land Use Planning, there were some significant updates to this. I worked with Jeremy Smith, the Director of the Trekkie Meadows Regional Planning Agency, to continue to figure out how to collaborate more on regional water planning with the regional management plan. So we'll be continuing to work towards that and see where we can assist with incorporating water management planning into their natural resources plan and sharing data and information. The Local Government Drainage Programs, 10.16, that's still under development. I received this morning some information from a couple of the different agencies that are gonna help me work through where they're at with their goals. I think some of the budgets and capital improvement plans needed to be complete before they would have that information for me, so now that they've completed that process, we'll include that into this section. For the Regional Flood Plane Management and Flood Control Section, 10.17, there's minimal changes there. I'll be working with that group to see if they have any proposed action items that they'd like to be included in the plan for support from the regional commission. 10.18 is the Water Quality Protection and Remediation Section. I contacted the Nevada Division of Environmental Protection because, you know, these projects are really in their, they implement these programs for the Spark Solvent Fuel Site and the PCE Contamination Plume in Lemon Valley, and I talked to Jeff Collins over there, the Bureau Chief of the Corrective Actions Section, and he's getting me some information on that. He said there has been some updates, and so I want to make sure I reflect their current status of what they're working on in those areas for that section. And then finally, 10.19 is the Source Water and Watershed Protection. Of course, this hits close to home for me. This is a new section to reflect the 2020 Integrated Source Water and Watershed Protection Plan that was approved by this board in the WRWC, and we'd like to continue those efforts in implementing that plan, so there's some goals in there for us to do that. So that is the overview of the chapter. I know that's a lot, it's the summary of all the chapters, so I feel like I get to give you an overview of the entire plan. So with that, as with Chapter 4, we'll be looking to have you review the draft and provide comments to us by mid-April or provide staff comments by mid-April, and we'll bring that final draft update to you in the May meeting. So with that, Chairman Solero, back to you.
All right, are there any questions for Ms. Rigdon?
Not seeing any on my incredibly small screen here. I'll go ahead and move on to item number eight, then, report and discussion regarding chapters and schedule related to the drafting and presentation of the 2021-2040 Regional Water Management Plan. Ms. Rigdon.
Thank you, Chairman Solero. Kim Rigdon, Water Resources Program Manager, for the record. So this will be pretty quick since you just heard about Chapter 4 and Chapter 10. I just wanted to give you a quick update. The chapters that are completed are 1, 2, 3, 5, 6, 7, and 8. I do have comments coming for Chapter 6. I had a couple of the agency groups that wanted to review that as they were developing their drainage programs, their local drainage programs, and some of the flood management approaches, so you may see some edits come back, and if they do, I'll bring them back in May with Chapter 4 and Chapter 10. You'll also see Chapter 9 come back in May. Kathleen Hansford with HEC Consulting has contacted a lot of, I think a lot of you on the board and some of the different agencies to make sure that she has the most updated information for the cost and financing section, and we worked with the City of Reno to get their updated capital improvement plan and budget information, and she worked with Commissioner
There was a recommendation for a map that I think there's a map in Chapter Nine in the Finance and Costs section that breaks down the service areas by the jurisdictions served within the service areas. So, City of Reno residents or connections being soured to STUMWORF and those sorts of things. So, it's an informative map, so I think I'm going to take that map and maybe look at what's on the current map, locations of the wastewater facilities, that sort of thing, and then maybe make a new map rather than just adding one. So, a new hybrid map, I think, will be in the version when you see it next. Let's see. Water Reclamation Facility Section has essentially been rewritten to bring things up to current status, so incorporating all of the current information from facility plans, expansions, and upgrades and that sort of thing. And also, there are descriptions of current practices for effluent management. Section 4.3 is being rewritten almost exclusively or entirely. Descriptions of the Proposed Palomino Farms Sustainable Water Resources Feasibility Study and an alternative being evaluated or studied for discharge to Long Valley Creek. Both appear now as subsections in that section of the chapter. Also, descriptions of One Water Nevada's Advanced Purified Water Program at American Flat and the Pipeline Project to Supply Tumworf Reclaimed Water to the Tahoe Reno Industrial GID have been received, but I didn't get them in time to put them in the packet. So, those are incorporated into the draft chapter. You'll see them next. So, now what I need is a section describing the Regional Effluent Management Planning Guidance Document. That will go in as soon as it's written. And then, the final section, 4.4, is on septic systems. That's pretty much unchanged from the 2016 Regional Water Management Plan. There hasn't been a whole lot of work done on that subject in the last five years, at least from the regional water planning perspective. It focuses on areas having high densities of septic systems and then includes some studies from five to 10 years ago to understand the effects to water quality and some water quality mitigation measures. So, in conclusion, a new map based on TMRPA's map that I described earlier is going to be in the new version of the chapter as well as a section on the Effluent Management Planning Guidance Document. I expect to present that to you in May, so in one month's time. And I'm not really asking for any action from you today, so I think this is a non-action item. But what I would ask you to do is have a look at the version that's in your packet. I will email you an editable version of what I have so far. So, that'll just be lacking the one section. And if you want to provide me comments, have your staff provide me comments, just email them back to the email address that it comes from. And that would be adequate for me to incorporate those comments back into the version that you'll see in May. And then, hopefully by May, you will have what will be the final draft version compiled into the updated plan. That's all I have.
All right. Mr. Smith, thank you very much. What's the date you would like to have those comments back by?
I think anytime, how about tax day?
Perfect.
Or maybe if that's in the middle of the week, the Friday following April 15th, that would be plenty of time. That's a Friday?
It's a Friday.
Okay. Monday, the 18th works for me then.
All right. Sounds good. Are there any other comments, questions for Mr. Smith?
Appreciate the report.
Thank you very much. All right. We'll move on to item number seven, Report Discussion Regarding Draft Update for Chapter 10. Ms. Rigdon.
Thank you, Chairman Solero. Kim Rigdon, Water Resources Program Manager for the record. So, today you should have received, when you sat down, the Chapter 10 draft that I've recently been able to put together. And I also had Jen email it to the commissioners that are on Zoom today, so hopefully you were able to get the link to that or that email. So, I'd stated in the staff report that I would provide two copies, one with track changes and one a readable copy. I'm abstaining from providing the track changes because it's unreadable. This entire chapter has been overhauled, so I felt like we could save paper and time and just bring you the chapter that's clean and readable. So, also in writing the staff report, I've made some significant edits to the format of the chapters. So, the sections that you see in the staff report no longer match with the sections are in the actual part. So, you won't be able to refer back from the staff report to the actual document, draft document. And the reason I decided to do some significant formatting on that was we have planning areas such as the South Trucky Meadows, Lemon Valley, Central Trucky Meadows. And we had two different sections for municipal water resources and then one for wastewater and effluent management. And a significant amount of the conversation is now overlapping with the reclaimed water reuse projects and effluent reuse. And so, I felt like it would be more readable to outline for the specific planning areas the relevant municipal and wastewater, municipal water and wastewater sections, and it reads easier. And then, when I do receive the last of the wastewater management and effluent information, I'll go ahead and incorporate that in, so you'll see in some of the sections that that information is still developing. So, I'll just quickly go through this section. So, Section 10.1 is, it reflects the 2020-2040 Water Resources Plan Updates from Tumworf, which address the future water demands, conjunctive use of water resources, source water protection, aquifer storage and recovery. I don't know why I can't talk today. And One Water Nevada efforts. And Section 10.2 for Central Trucky Meadows is essentially the Tumworf Facility Updates. They had a 2020 Facility Plan Update, and it outlines much of their recycled water goals. Section 10.3 for South Trucky Meadows outlines the, this section has a significant overhaul, and it reflects both municipal and wastewater and effluent management alternatives. It speaks to the Mount Rose Treatment Plan Completion, Aquifer Storage and Recovery Facilities that were constructed, recent pump station and pipeline improvements, and the Huffaker Reservoir Lining. It also includes information from the 2020 Water Reclamation Facility Plan, and effluent management options are identified in that. So, that one should be pretty complete. The South, I'm sorry, the Stead Lemon Valley section is Section 10.4, and that one is essentially the RISWORF expansion to four MGD. It speaks to the Swan Lake Flood Mitigation Strategies, American Flat, Advanced Purified Water Project, and the future, near-future decommissioning of the Lemon Valley Water Reclamation Facility. 10.5 is Cold Springs, and that primarily outlines the need for the water balance modeling in that closed hydrographic basin. The Rapid Infiltration Basin Capacity Analysis for the Cold Springs Water Reclamation Facility. Wastewater and Effluent Management Sections are developing for that section currently. So, those will be forthcoming. For Spanish Springs, Section 10.6, this section is primarily focused on Tumworf's completion of the Pilot Water Treatment Study for Nitrate and Arsenic Removal and the Palomino Valley Effluent Reuse and Aquifer Storage and Recovery Project, potential project, and some of the septic density challenges that they're facing. 10.7, the Tracy Segment Lower Trucky River. This one is focused on Tri-Center and coordination with the Tri, General Improvement District. I want to say Tri-Center, Tri-Gid. And coordination with Tumworf for the non-podable water demands and with respect to return flow and Tumworf's near-term effluent management strategies. Section 10.8 is the Trucky Canyon Verde area, and this one does just focus on Tumworf's purchase of the West Reno Water Company and their development of the long-range facility plan that they have in place. Section 10.9 is an older section, Creation of New Water Systems. It has minor modifications that essentially clarify the conformance with regional water planning and master plans and Tumworf's role to assess benefits and financial impacts. Section 10.10, the Groundwater Resource Development and Impact to Domestic Wells, has really minor edits. That one hasn't really changed, so that one will look really familiar. Section 10.1 is our Water Conservation Section, and I did some significant paring down of this section to reference just current and proposed activities under the Tumworf Water Conservation Plan, which is outlined significantly in Chapter Eight and has a table and a list of all the conservation measures, short-term and long-term measures that they are addressing for water conservation. And so, I didn't, I just pared that down and proposed that we continue support of those strategies. I am working with Tumworf staff to see if there's any more developing proposed action items for that section. Section 10.12, Integrated Use of Water Rights, and I promise we're getting there. This one is Tumworf's section, and it essentially addresses, I lost my place, sorry, all the integrated use of water rights in the area from a perspective of cooperative water management rather than water quantity issues. And so, there is some changes there to look at how we're, the region is going to manage those water resources from that cooperative management approach. Section 10.13, Septic Systems and Water Quality. There's not a lot of changes in here. I did send this over for feedback from a couple of the staffers at Tumworf that used to work in Washoe County Division of Water Resources and has done some extensive studies, and he's looking at updating, helping me to update where necessary. But it looks like this will have some minor edits moving forward. And the Trucky Meadows NPDES Stormwater Discharge Permit, there are very minor edits to that that continue to support the implementation of their swamp program. And activities, I did include some support for any 319 applications that they might be putting forward for watershed projects that are complementary to meeting their permit requirements. On 10.15, Water Resources and Land Use Planning, there were some significant updates to this. I worked with Jeremy Smith, the Director of the Trucky Meadows Regional Planning Agency, to continue to figure out how to collaborate more on regional water planning with the regional management plan. So, we'll be continuing to work towards that and see where we can assist with incorporating water management planning into their natural resources plan and sharing data and information. The Local Government Drainage Programs, 10.16, that's still under development. I received this morning some information from a couple of the different agencies that are going to help me work through where they're at with their goals. I think some of the budgets and capital improvement plans needed to be complete before they would have that information from me. So, now that they've completed that process, we'll include that into the section. For the Regional Flood Plane Management and Flood Control Section, 10.17, there's minimal changes there. I'll be working with that group to see if they have any proposed action items that they'd like to be included in the plan for support from the Regional Commission. 10.18 is the Water Quality Protection and Remediation Section. I contacted the Nevada Division of Environmental Protection because, you know, these projects are really in their, they implement these programs for the Spark Solvent Fuel Site and the PCE Contamination Plume in Lemon Valley. And I talked to Jeff Collins over there, the Bureau Chief of the Corrective Actions Section, and he's getting me some information on that. He said there has been some updates, and so I want to make sure I reflect their current status of what they're working on in those areas for that section. And then finally, 10.19 is the Source Water and Watershed Protection. Of course, this hits close to home for me. This is a new section to reflect the 2020 Integrated Source Water and Watershed Protection Plan that was approved by this board in the WRWC. And we'd like to continue those efforts in implementing that plan, so there's some goals in there for us to do that. So, that is the overview of the chapter. I know that's a lot, it's the summary of all the chapters, so I feel like I get to give you an overview of the entire plan. So, with that, as with Chapter Four, we'll be looking to have you review the draft and provide comments to us by mid-April or provide staff comments by mid-April, and we'll bring that final draft update to you in the May meeting. So, with that, Chairman Solero, back to you.
All right. Are there any questions for Ms. Rigdon? Not seeing any on my incredibly small screen here. I'll go ahead and move on to item number eight then. Report Discussion Regarding Chapters and Schedule Related to the Drafting and Presentation of the 2021-2040 Regional Water Management Plan. Ms. Rigdon.
Thank you, Chairman Solero. Kim Rigdon, Water Resources Program Manager for the record. So, this will be pretty quick since you just heard about Chapter Four and Chapter Ten. I just wanted to give you a quick update. The chapters that are completed are one, two, three, five, six, seven, and eight. I do have comments coming for Chapter Six. I had a couple of the agency groups that wanted to review that as they were developing their drainage programs, their local drainage programs, and some of the flood management approaches. So, you may see some edits come back, and if they do, I'll bring them back in May with Chapter Four and Chapter Ten. You'll also see Chapter Nine come back in May. Kathleen Hansford with HEC Consulting has contacted a lot of, I think a lot of you on the board and some of the different agencies to make sure that she has the most updated information for the Cost and Financing Section. And we worked with the City of Reno to get their updated capital improvement plan and budget information, and she worked with Commissioner Enlow to get the Tumworf updated information. And she's incorporating that into the plan, and you should see that final draft update coming before the commission in May. One other thing to note on this particular item is we did go before the WRWC and get approval for AECOM to package the plan. So, that'll be a budget not to exceed $34,000 for professional services to do the editing and the formatting and help us to finalize the wastewater chapters. So, I just wanted to give you that update. They'll be doing that during the months of April, May, and June. And so, the schedule should be fairly good moving forward. No updates to the actual timeline, just when we're bringing those chapters forward to you next time. And that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Any questions? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to item number nine, Program Managers' Report. Ms. Rigdon.
Thank you, Chairman Solero. Kim Rigdon, Water Resources Program Manager. So, you'll see in your packet you have the status report on the projects. There's not much to update on other than we have received all the billing for the Water Usage Review Program. Thank you, Tumworf, for that. The UNR Advanced Water Treatment Program, that's the A-plus Leadership Contract. I couldn't remember if I had presented last time that we had amended that budget, and that's the Rick Warner and Associates contract that we're working on. So, I just wanted to make sure I highlighted that that budget's been amended since last time to include the additional amount to have them help us move through that project. And the One Water A-plus Reclaimed Water Feasibility Study, it still shows that we have, I'm sorry, not the A-plus feasibility study, that's the UNR Advanced Treatment Project. The project is complete. I haven't taken it off because there's still budget remaining under that line item. Moving forward, I wanted to go ahead and keep that project open until the agreement expiration date. I do, I know that the Stormwater Committee had the kickoff meeting for the Environmental Incentives. It's WP 310308. The Environmental Incentives firm is contracted to do the Water Quality Credit Program with the Stormwater Permit Coordinating Committee, and they had their kickoff meeting, and I believe it was March 24th, two Thursdays ago, and I attended that meeting. It was a very high-level building consensus-type meeting with NDEP and the Stormwater Committee to kind of bounce off of each other and solicit from each other where their support might be for goals moving forward for the project. So, it was somewhat high-level, and I'm planning on attending those meetings moving forward, and I'll bring back to the commission my report on those meetings. And then, of course, the Cost and Finance Chapter Update, the very last item. There's enough budget in there for Kathryn Hansford to go ahead and complete that Chapter Nine update. So, we're pretty good. And if the financial report, if there's not any questions on that financial report, that's pretty straightforward. Budget is looking really, really good moving forward. We have a little over $2 million in the bank still and plenty of funding left over to continue out the last three months of this year. So, I will turn that back over to you, Commissioner Solero, for questions from the commission.
All right. Do we have any questions for Ms. Rigdon? Again, not seeing any. So, with that, we'll move on to item number 10, Discussion Regarding Location Possible Agenda Items for the Upcoming Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission. Ms. Rigdon.
Thank you, Commissioner Solero. Kim Rigdon. So, our next meeting will be May 4th, 2022, and as I said before, we'll bring back Chapter Four, Chapter Ten, potentially edits to Chapter Six and Chapter Nine. We may have a few project updates depending on upcoming meetings. And so, with that, I'll turn it over to the commission for comments or discussion on any future agenda items.
All right. Does any members of the commission have any topics for future meetings?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, may I?
You may.
Thank you, sir. I have one. I noticed in the news, and I've discussed with at least one other commissioner here, the UNR project. The Department of Geography received an NSF grant to address, well, the story on Kolo's website is "Leads Collaboration Effort to Address Water Issues in Nevada." Don't know what that is. I read it's a pretty high-level story, so there's not a ton of details, but they got $150,000 from NSF to develop a network structure and goals with the ultimate intent of having this be a five-year, $15 million effort to, again, address water issues. And I thought, well, we might want to know a little about that. So, if it's okay with the commission, I'd like to perhaps have Ms. Rigdon reach out to, it's being led by Dr. Ann Nolan, Department of Geography, University of Nevada, reach out and see where that project is going and see where her goals might align with ours and what, how we can help one another.
That sounds good. Any other comments, questions? Ms. Rigdon, will you go ahead and, I guess we should probably have a motion on that. There's possible action here, so I'm guessing that's a motion. Can we take a second on that?
Take one second.
Perfect. Is there any public comment?
Mr. Chair, I made another topic.
Item?
Oh, go ahead.
Would the commission find it useful to be updated on the status of our water supply and maybe talk about the conservation measures we'll be employing this summer?
Yes. Okay. Can we take this all in one? So, Mr. Drinkwater, could you amend your motion potentially for Ms. Rigdon, and we can just take it all in one shot?
Happy to do so, but.
Just interject briefly. I was just going to suggest making a motion to encompass not just the two recommendations from the committee members, but also the items that Ms. Rigdon identified for the next meeting.
And anything else before I amend the meeting? I mean, let's get it all in one shot, right?
Perfect.
Okay. So, I move to direct the program manager to contact Dr. Ann Nolan at the University of Nevada to discuss how the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission might assist in her efforts in addressing Nevada water issues, to have Mr. Howke bring back a report on the water situation for the Trucky Meadows in the upcoming year and the issues that Ms. Rigdon delineated in her report at the beginning of this agenda item.
All right. Does the secondor agree?
Yes.
Perfect. All right. All those in favor then signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. That passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Moves us on to item number 11, Commissioner Comments. Are there any comments from commissioners?
I do have one, Mr. Chair.
Go right ahead.
So, John Enlow, Trucky Meadows Water Authority, I just wanted to let the board and the public know. So, back in 2002, this board approved a water and wastewater facility plan for the South Trucky Meadows. It was prepared for Washoe County STEMGID, and at the time, it was the Western Regional Water Commission also participated in that effort. But one of the recommendations of that facility plan was to construct a small water treatment plant up high on the Mount Rose Fan to augment groundwater supplies up there to help with the recovery of the water table. And I'm pleased to report that today is the first day water from White's Creek has actually gone into the distribution system up there. So, big day, huge effort, 20 years in the making. So, thank you.
Wow. Any other comments?
I'd like to make a comment.
Go right ahead.
We, last week, we had the International Water Association leading Edge Technologies Conference in our region and was able to attend a couple of events with that, but just very impressed with the participation and the level and quality of the programming. I heard very positive comments from our staff and just wanted to commend Dr. Krishna Pagia and his efforts as well as several members on this body and their efforts for bringing that conference to Reno and Sparks. And just wanted to give a little shout-out to this commission and to the public to let them know the type and quality of conference that was brought here. This was the first time the conference had been back in the United States since 2010 when it was in Phoenix. Due to COVID, we had to wait a couple of years to actually hold it, but it was well-received from all participants that I heard from. So, just wanted to make that announcement.
Thank you. Are there any other mission comments? See, we need, we'll go ahead and move on to item number 12, Staff Comments. Ms. Rigdon.
Can you hear me okay? I do have one staff comment, and I'm very excited to share this news because most of you know that I came from NDEP and ran the Source Water Protection Program for almost 15 years before I came to work for the WRWC Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission. And during that time, I was able to work with this community for almost five years to develop the 2020 Integrated Source Water and Watershed Management Plan that has just received a national award through the American Waterworks Association for the Large Water Systems Exemplary Source Water Protection. So, I'm, this is very exciting for me. It's kind of my mic drop moment, leaving my old job and coming into this job, and I want to thank John and his staff. They helped with putting the application together. I think we got it done about three months before I left NDEP. So, I'm very, very excited that this community has received this award, and so I just wanted to share that news.
Well done. Congratulations. Thank you. All right. We'll go ahead and move on to item number 13, Public Comments. Were there any public comments?
I have none.
Thank you. That'll take us on to item number 14, Adduce. Go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much.